Committee of the whole meeting, can we begin with roll call, please?
Councilmember Shummers.
Here.
Dederman.
Here.
Seeley.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Musman.
Here.
Kearns.
Here.
You gotta fix your collar, Elvis.
Nice. All right, we have Jay from Smith Group.
Well, good morning, everybody.
We haven't been here that long.
That should be able to turn. Just probably stuck to.
I don't wanna break it off of this.
I can be very quick or two.
All right, Matt asked me to be done in half an hour, so I'll do my best to go through this quickly. It's really, actually, I'll do it because it's a pleasure to be back in front of all of you again. Many of you I've seen at meetings and for those who don't, maybe don't realize it, you know, this has been a long time in process here. I think we started this about, I don't know, maybe.
Seems like yesterday.
Sixteen months ago, maybe? Yeah, a little over a year. But it's been in process for a long time. We've been through a very robust public engagement process, all of which will be summarized in our actual report. I'm not gonna go through the details of the public engagement, I'll summarize it here today. But what I'm here to talk about today is the riverfront redevelopment study. And I think many of you are familiar with it, so, oh, good, Matt's driving. Okay, perfect. So go ahead and scroll, I won't, I won't touch the mouse and mess it up. All right, so we looked at two project study areas. There was a north study area, and then there was a south study area. This drawing is split in the middle, so that's not quite to scale there. But basically, what's happening is that the south study area is your big riverfront space right now. The north study area pretty much centers on the existing boat launch today. The 35th Street, is it?
Twenty-Fifth Avenue North.
Twenty-Fifth Avenue North, thank you. For some reason, I was only called Thirty-Fifth Street. So it's almost centered on it.
Boat ramp, too, that's kind of strange.
And so what we did as a team is, we went through lots of different, and many of you were part of this, so I hope you recall it, but we went through lots of different evaluation methods. Here's just a summary slide of what the community shared with us. We did an online engagement process. We had a little over 200 responses. This is just a quick summary infographic of what the community shared with us. But the focus of our project was to look at how that north study area and how the south study area might be redeveloped. And what I want everyone to understand is that the ideas that we're gonna show tonight are just ideas. They're not representing what's actually gonna happen, they're representing what could happen.
Can you repeat that, please?
Yeah. I think you got it. What's being shown is not, may not be what actually happened, it's just what could happen. And it's gonna really fall to all of you, as champions of your community, to drive this plan forward from here on out. So, as I said, we had a series of public engagement meetings. We had a, we had, our first public engagement meeting was held in the bottom of the brewery. So that was a pretty fun night. Had lots of people come through, many of you were there. We did dot voting on boards, if you were there. If you recall, you were putting green and red stickers, or maybe it was blue and red stickers. I think we ran out of green, so we were using blue and red stickers. And then we came back with ideas and presented those at the Sawmill, and then presented those at the, what was the name of the second restaurant?
Rusty Barrel.
Rusty Barrel, thank you, Rusty Barrel. And so presented that in the morning, and then presented that again in the evening. And lots of people were able to respond to the ideas that we shared. Just a quick summary, yeah, so we started on May 24th of 2023 with that first stakeholder engagement. June 6th with our first public meeting. Our last public, our second public meeting was August of last year. So really, been back and forth with your community a few times now through this process. In between those public meetings, what maybe isn't clear is there was a lot of back and forth with the city. The Smith Group was developing ideas. We went through multiple iterations of concepts and some really big blue sky stuff that maybe was pushing Matt and his team a little too far, and Matt helped bring us back. Some stuff where we talked through about how we might, how we might drive some ideas even further than what we're showing. And so there was three or four iterations where we went through different levels of design and concept designs, shared those with the city, and the city gave us good feedback, and that's reflected in the ideas that we took to public meeting, too. And then, as part of this work that we did, we were, one of the partners we brought on was Kristen Fish-Petersen with Redevelopment Resources, and they prepared a market study. So you'll see, just what she did here, she identified the market potential. I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time talking about the market piece, because frankly, numbers aren't my thing. But there is a robust discussion, and it's in the report, you'll see that there's a fairly robust review of if you were to proceed with the concept as shown. They have the potential to generate this much revenue. That's basically the takeaway from there. Because, again, the concepts that are shown are just ideas. What's actually gonna happen in real life is gonna be different than what's shown in the concepts. But it gives you a vision to adopt and move forward. All right, so, I'm gonna take you real quickly through the first, the north study area, and then we'll go through the south study area. So, the north study area, right on, centered on that 25th Avenue boat dock, which is kind of right where letter A is, right there, yep. It involves a lot of property that the city owns, and you'll see, we looked at lots of different strategies for filling in some broken teeth, especially in the area where Item 5 is and north of there. So Item 5 is where you've got an existing park, but you'll see, we looked at, there's some opportunities to fill in some of the residential gaps that are along there. And those single-family homes actually are quite positive from a revenue generating standpoint. You can roll to the next drawing. So that just shows existing conditions. We put together a quick model that shows you what that looks like today, if you were sitting in a hot air balloon or on the back of a eagle or something like that, that's about what it would look like. We put together some imaging, and these are images that your community selected and told us this should be the inspiration for how we look at different development scenarios on that north area. And then we put together a couple of different concepts, and this was the preferred concept. The areas that are shown in yellow are properties that the city owns and controls. The areas that are not covered in the yellow band are not owned and controlled by the city, except for right there by the river. Matt was circling it with his mouse there, of course. So what did we look at? Big moves were here that we looked at, as I said, along this whole, this whole north corridor. So north, or east of Garfield Street, basically, a whole bunch of residential homes can fit in there. You can come in with a classic style of architecture, but it's, most of the classic buildings that are being built now, this style is called new urbanist design. They have, they evoke the aesthetic of a classic home, but the interior is much more open. So I live in an old house now, I lived in an old house in Detroit. Lots of old houses are separated by lots of walls, right? We have better building technology, so we can evoke that aesthetic of a classic home, the classic architecture that is really, really what pops to people's minds when they think of a home. But inside, it's got a much more open floor plan opportunity. So you're looking at a whole bunch of single-family homes on that, on that space east of Garfield, all the way down to redesigned Rainbow Park. We took the, we proposed taking the playfield out of Rainbow Park. Redesigning Rainbow Park is more of a community space, a community park space with playground, could be a splash pad or something like that, but a couple of different opportunities there for how Rainbow Park could be redesigned. We took the space along the creek, along Willow Creek, and basically identified that you could fit some more of your RV parking up there. And this becomes critical for the south plan. You could add to your RV parking that you have today at the Riverside Park, Riverfront Park, on the south area, or you could move RV parking, you actually gain RV parking by moving up here to this north area. So you can gain RV parking right along Willow Brook Park, I'm sorry, Willow Brook. And then, right at the dock itself, you can gain some additional RV parking.
I missed that one, it's actually, I'm sorry, I missed that, it's actually Turtle Creek, I didn't catch that.
Oh, Turtle Creek, I'm sorry.
Because Willow's down, yep, yep.
At Turtle Creek, I'm sorry. So you could gain some RV parking at Turtle Creek, immediately north of it, and then you can gain some RV parking at your current boat trailer parking area, which is underutilized today. You could gain some RV parking in that space today. Then we took a sort of a larger lens and said, where are other spaces that we could develop? And we found spaces where you could basically extend the old Main Street as part of Old Lions, and bring that right to the levee, take that right to your levee trail, and really create, enhance the downtown experience with a couple of different styles of live-work structures. So assuming that there's a, the way we approached this from a planning standpoint was to assume that the first floors got commercial or business space on the first, and then the second or third floors of these structures have residential space. And so you're able to gain quite a bit of net revenue attached to that. And so here's a good example of what that looks like, just as a modeling example. So these are just raw mass models that are thrown on that old existing conditions model we had. And if you pan down, Matt, here's more of a flipping, so you're looking back at the Mississippi River. This is what that might look like as an aesthetic rendering. So you can see different scales of buildings in there, townhomes. You can see those single-family homes would be on the left-hand side of that, of this image here. We kind of made allusions to what the new Rainbow Park would be, and you can kind of see there are RVs out there. Yep, parked on the lawn by the river. One of the big things we proposed, if you could roll back up to that one for just a minute, I'm sorry. One of the big things we proposed was adding a new pedestrian bridge right at the crossing of Turtle Creek. So that would link the new RV parking north of Turtle Creek and the new RV parking south of Turtle Creek with a new pedestrian bridge that crosses right there on the riverside. And that would link you right back up to the levee trail. All right, so, again, I won't spend a lot of time here, because I'm not gonna be able to ferret out the numbers effectively for you, but basically, in the plan that we put together, we saw, we found that you could, you could potentially infill with about 60 single-family homes, about eight units of live-work, about 20 townhomes, and about 160 multifamily units, and that still leaves 36,000 square feet of commercial space. The net takeaway of that is a positive increase of between $73 million and $71 million, if you were to develop it as shown. You can roll one more. This breaks it down, the economic impact of the single-family residential by itself, the economic impact of the multifamily by itself, and then the economic impact of the commercial by itself. You can see the gross output of the, of the single families, about 39 million, 40 million, rounded up, 40 million. About 65 million attached to the commercial space, and then if we pan all the way to the right, yep, there we go, about 14 million attached to the multifamily in terms of economic value. And that economic value includes taxable dollars. The more, the more people you have here, the more they're using your restaurants, the more they're using, they're using your facilities, sort of embed. It is, it is a feedback loop that's positive. And then with regards to the southern study area, it's predominantly your Riverside Park, but it did include, you know, it did include looking at opportunities out to Joyce's Island. And we recognize that a big part of this space is currently utilized for TNT, and that part of this space has also got an environmental cap on it, and so we're totally sensitive to that as well. We brought three different concepts to the public, at the public meeting in August of 2024, and then modified based on the feedback we got to a preferred concept. So again, built the massing model of what that looks like today. So this is existing conditions. We had shared some images with your community about what are the types of things they would like to see. These are the images that your community sent back to us and said, these are the, this is the aesthetic that we'd like to achieve in that southern study area. And then we put together, again, a massing model, a concept plan that looks like this. And really, what we did with this concept plan is, it's tough for me to do without pointing out, Matt be my pointer. But we really created two alternatives that pop in. So alternatives that Matt's highlighting there, drop into the lower left-hand corner, right where your RV parking is. So there's an opportunity to realign your RV parking, or an opportunity to build a new aquatic facility where the RV parking is. And this would be conditioned on moving that RV parking to that north study area. Or alternatively, where your aquatic facility is today, where your pool is today, I don't know if I would, would you call it an aquatic facility, Josh? Where your aquatic facility is today, you could rebuild in place, or if the aquatic facility was to move north, it frees that space up for other types of development, residential or commercial development. And in either scenario, we took a look at, so the aquatic facilities you're seeing there are drawn to scale. Your opportunity to increase the offerings that you provide at your aquatic facility is there, whether you rebuild in place or you were to build north. The big advantage would be, if you build to the north side, you can continue to operate in your current pool and aquatic facility while you're building your new facility, and then you close that down and you open it up for development. Alternatively, you would shut your current facility down, and it's typically closed for about, at least 18 months, probably 20 months before you're able to reopen. So you'd be, you wouldn't be able to gain any revenue out of that facility while you're building your new one, it would just be sitting unused. Regardless, in any either scenario, your offerings could be a lot greater than you have now. What we're showing here, we'll talk about it in a minute, but what we're showing here is about a 15 to 20 million dollar aquatic facility. That sounds big, that's not that large for a community of your size. I know, I just sat through everything you guys talked through, so I'm totally sensitive to what the dollars really mean. All right, so, what does this mean from an economic development standpoint for the southern area? It's really close to the northern, to the northern area. There aren't that many more units that we're bringing here, because we're preserving the space that TNT is in. You've got a lot of space that would stay green, public space here. So you've still got 10 residential units, I'm sorry, 10 retail units, 60 affordable units, affordable family, affordable living units. Those could be market rate, so those could be either affordable living units, or they could be workforce housing, which is, does everybody understand, here, understand what workforce housing is? Okay. And then you'd have the mixed-use multifamily 100 units. What net takeaway is that the potential economic impact is $78 million. The overall economic impact, when you look down at this, is about $13 million associated with just that. That's just the residential piece there. So this is, again, what that model looks like today in terms of, this is your existing conditions today. Those little green squares right there just represent where your tent laydown space is for TNT, that's what those are showing.
Oh, the RVs, yep.
Collective parking.
Yep. And then if you roll to the next.
Keep going.
Keep going, keep going, keep going. There you go. So there's an example of what that might look like from a massing standpoint. This is showing your aquatic facility staying in its current location. And if we roll down, this is what it looks like if the aquatic facility were to move over. Go ahead. So you can't, can't quite see it, because it slides, oop, this is the north one.
Yep.
There you go. So it would slide over there, and then you've got, this is a prettier rendering of what that could be like. All right, so what we did then, after we put these two big plans together, is we identified what we recommend as your priority projects. So the first priority project we recommend would be to relocate and redevelop Rainbow Park, that's back at that north study area. Doing that frees up all of that, most of that property on the east side of Garfield for single-family residential. By realigning and redesigning Rainbow Park, that opens up a whole chunk there for a bunch of that single-family residential, which is, has a pretty significant economic impact in and of itself. If you recall, that was about $14 million. That's about a $5 million investment, we're doing a project in the city of Clive, Iowa. That's a small neighborhood park, that's right, that's right at $5 million. It's basically the same size as your Rainbow Park. The bridge would be, the bridge and the RV parking move to the north end would be our second and third priority projects. By moving that RV parking up, you either gain a bunch of RV parking, or you're gonna be able to free up that southern space, so you could move your aquatic facility if you want to. But by moving it, moving or building additional RV parking's pretty low cost, it's only about $2 million in round numbers. Then adding the bridge across there is closer to 2 to 5 million dollars. It depends on the type of bridge you get, and whether or not you were to pursue that as a single-span bridge, or if it had to have multiple abutments. So if you only have abutments on the end, it's less expensive. If you had to have additional abutments partway in, it increased, you end up with really three bridges total is what, was what the manufacturer would produce, and that would bring your cost up. And then the aquatic facility, as I said, is about an 18 to 20 million dollar investment, whether you do that in place or whether you were to move that. And that comes from two small communities that we worked with in Wisconsin. They completed their aquatic facilities, which is basically a pool, a new water slide, a splash pad. The pool has water, basketball in it, has a climbing wall in it, has a bunch of, has a bunch of content in it. And both of those were completed in 2024 at 16 million. And so I'm just guessing, with inflation, you're gonna be closer to 18 to 20 million by the time you might build that. All right, how did I do on, pretty close to 30 minutes.
Very awesome.
Right on.
What kind of questions can I answer for the group tonight?
No, that was a beautiful job. It's a good blueprint for development going forward.
Mike, please.
Yeah, I think it's a good blueprint for development that we can show people, developers, going forward. You know, it's a starting, it's a starting point, anyway. And that's what I wanted out of the whole subject of hiring, anyway. So, yeah.
And I thought it was a good mesh with the north end folks, as Ari Levin's is now the Sami Museum president. And so they, they were, came by the other day, we're talking a different topic, but they were showing some of the, kind of the renders of what they were seeing as well, but this would fit really good at some of those things, as far as some of those living areas for people that could actually then look at the river, and then be involved in what the Sawmill wants to do as well. So, like I said, from the get-go, it's, it's great to have in your hands, and you can present to a developer, because they're the ones that have to put the money there. But, and I've, as I told, as Josh and I told Jay and the mayor from the start, I've used that 2000 study a lot. I don't know if you've ever seen it, it's in my, on my shelf, but I dust it off and pull it out, and I think this can be the same way. Nothing needs to happen overnight, but there's things that can start getting juices flowing, hey, look at this, this could be a good thing. Because when you start talking about increasing revenue, I don't necessarily just draw a picture to property taxes. I draw it to people that are with their person wallet, that are living on the river. You know, that are bringing more economics to our community, you know? And the other thing I liked from Kristen was that she really nested well with that ECI, or University of Iowa study we just did on housing. And it just shows you that we need so many more housing units. You name them, whether there are townhouses, condos, single-family homes, we just need more housing.
So I would say the goal of this plan was to give you a vision. The hard work really, I mean, I wish that I could help you, but I really, the hard work's gonna fall to you. It's gonna be up to you to go have coffee with people, go have coffee with developers, pull the plan out and say, we have an idea of what we want to do. I know it's not gonna look like this exactly, but we can do something really cool here. And that's how you're gonna shake out development. And, you know, I, to answer the question about roads, we added maybe two roads, but if you add a bunch of houses on your existing roads, it actually increases your opportunity then to be able to service those existing roads. There's a lot of built-in benefit here, and kind of right at the start of a lot of work. I wish I could say it was gonna be really easy from here, but it's, it's not hard work. It's just got, you gotta be consistent, it's like working out, you just got, you gotta be committed to doing it. And that, and then it will shake loose, it will shake loose.
All right, any other questions or discussions about this? Looks really nice. Josh, do you have anything to say?
No, I think it was a great project, they did a good job. I think sometimes if you have a project like this, you're gonna like break a few eggs to make the omelet. Not everybody was seemingly in favor, but sometimes there's a lot of screw, as the naysayers sometimes. You gotta have the ability to pass that, to build that progressive thinkers, sometimes you gotta make the footsets.
Perfect. This is very well put together, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, it was a pleasure working with your community, thanks so much.
Awesome. All right.
Best for last.
Moving to sidewalks.
Moving on side. Everyone's favorite topic. Well, no, no, but yeah, it's important.
Did you ask for a motion?
Yeah. Can we just approve it? So, this was tabled a few times, and then it was included in the CIP. So this council, I believe, funded $200,000 towards the program. But I'll just briefly go through it, so we don't, so we know we're voting on it. So, I think the Supreme Court had some ruling where cities can be held liable for trips and falls on sidewalks unless they send a letter to the abutting property owner informing them of the, you know, the problematic sidewalk, deficient sidewalk. It's something we have not done since I've been here, or I don't even remember the last time, I think it was like the 90s. So, that's something we want to start doing and have to start doing, anyway, just to, to cover our bases. We're gonna need an ordinance change, which Lynch Dallas, Mr. O'Connell, will help us with. So the, the goal of this policy, this program, is to fix the sidewalks in town, to reduce the city's liabilities, and overall make it a, you know, I think a friendlier community, where you can walk and not fall down. So, the inspection schedule, we will separate the city into eight geographic areas. There's a lot of sidewalks in town, and we can look at them all in a year, but as far as including them in this program, unless there's like a, just, I think unless a sidewalk is an emergency, separate it into eight areas and focus on it that way. Bouncing ourselves around town is difficult, we'd almost have to hire another employee. So, the inspection schedule is, within eight years, we'll, we'll address every sidewalk in town, that's the goal. There's some criteria in there. I won't go through all that, but this way it's, this way it's black and white, and not just an opinion. The repair process is, we would notify the property owner in accordance with the state law, tell them that they have a deficient sidewalk, give them a deadline, and then, and then we would, we would take a look at it after that. We'd give them a deadline to do it, and then we would go do a reinspection. The reason we did it this way is because I don't, it's hard, the, we'll go down to the owner-occupied program. So if you, if you have an owner-occupied unit abutting the sidewalk that's deficient, you'd be eligible for a 50/50 program, where the city pays 50% of it, up to our budget authority for that year. This year it's $200,000. Low income would be 75% city match. So, we would hire a contractor to do all of these sidewalks each year. I think this is the most cost-effective way of doing it, and it's just easier to track. Having homeowners select their own contractors, you're gonna get wild prices all over the place, especially if it's a reimbursed. Having homeowners select their own contractors, you're going to get wild prices all over the place, especially if it's a reimbursement program. So this is a clean way to do it. It's all one exact cost per square foot for sidewalks. And then it makes the invoicing a lot easier as well.
So, so basically, we would hire a contractor?
Yes. Yeah, we would bid it out. Every year we would bid out the program. And, and it wouldn't be similar to like a street project, whereas a set of plans, this would be hypothetically, you'd write in the bid specs, price per square foot for sidewalk exceeding ten feet, for sidewalk exceeding a hundred feet, remove and replace. Something like that. So we get a good per-square-foot bid from, from contractors. And then when we get a, an agreement for this owner-occupied program, we would then tell the contractor, the lowest bidding contractor, to do that work. So that's, that's the program part of it. If it's not owner-occupied, if it's, if it's a rental unit, then it would be, then that would be totally on the, the homeowner or the, yeah, the, the abutting property owner to complete that work, so it's two separate systems. That part is, is very easy. It's just sending them a letter and then they would reconstruct the sidewalk, we'd do a reinspection. That's part one. That almost needs maybe like two sentences in an ordinance, not a big deal. But this owner-occupied sidewalk repair program is where we would have the city bid and then seek reimbursement. And this way, if, if we don't get the reimbursement, then we can place a lien on the, on the property taxes for that.
What if the owner doesn't want your contractor to touch his sidewalk, he wants to do it himself?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. I mean, if they want to do it. I think, I think if they want to do it themselves, they can.
They pay for it all then.
But they pay for it all.
They opt out of the fifty-fifty.
Yeah, that's, I agree.
And they might be able to save some money. But my concern with, yeah, so that, that's a good. I think if a, if a person does it themselves and is compliant, we could still offer fifty-fifty, honestly. I don't, I don't know why we couldn't if it's, if it's a compliant sidewalk and they're capable of doing it. If they want to save that money, I think that's fair. I do think that's fair. Yes, yes. We'll inspect it, they have to get a permit anyway. So that's a good, see, I was thinking that if someone hires someone to do the work, then that gets problematic. Who's, then it's a, you're pointing fingers. But if, if the owner is going to do the sidewalk themselves, is going to fix the sidewalk themselves, I think it's totally fair for them to be involved in the fifty-fifty program, as long as it's done correctly. I can, I can write that into the policy.
I mean, if you, if you did it something like that, you'd have to say it's got to require this much thickness. It's got to be this much width.
And it's already, it's already standards, so.
But I mean, for an owner operator, for, you know, for an owner to be imparted in the program and we provide the, the people to do the work, they're still going to get a good deal because it's, we're getting the lowest bid.
Yeah.
In quantity.
Did we budget for this?
The two hundred thousand dollars for sidewalk maintenance.
I voted no for that.
My thought, this is, I mean, you all remember the discussion we had.
So, hold on one second. My thought initially on this is we're biting off way more than we can chew, we can chew administratively. I think this is going to be a nightmare trying to administer this program.
Well, I think.
Jason and I were talking, it's sort of like, you know, he does the truncated domes, you know, when you come down to all the intersections. And that's contracted out as well. But I think with, it's a, I think it's a small enough chunk that they'll be taken, that, you know, and, and the thing we talked about too is some of these sidewalks, it's not, yes, some, you could replace the whole thing depending on where you are around here. But there's some might just be like three or, two or three squares that have to be done, so it's not going to be huge.
I think just time-wise though, inspecting, initially going out and then going back for reinspections and all that stuff, I think it's going to be a lot. I also, a little nervous on picking winners and losers as far as the sidewalk goes, you know what I mean? Like who, who gets in the program, who doesn't get in the program.
It's first come, first served, and it's, you gotta have a bad sidewalk, you have.
I, I know that, and I get there's, there's objective criteria, but there's still, there's still some, some room for error there. That, that's my, those are my concerns going through this. I would much rather just send a letter out to people and tell them to fix their sidewalk.
We're still going to do that.
Yeah. And not do the fifty-fifty program.
Yeah, I thought we were just sending a letter.
No, the reason we waited for this very day was because we wanted to see what the CIP, how that all fleshed out. So the fact that that two hundred thousand dollars was approved. And also, also Rhonda and Pat were both in part of that committee and they agreed to this.
Okay, okay, but what, but what I did not agree to, I, I did agree to the fifty-fifty and I think there's a seventy-five, twenty-five in there for low income. What I did not agree to, and I still don't agree to, is forcing people to fix their sidewalk. If we give them the letter and tell them that they are liable, it should be on them to fix the sidewalk at their leisure. Most people I would think, you know, responsible homeowners that can afford it are going to get on it. People that can't, they're going to roll the dice and see whether they have to fix it or not. I don't think that we should force anybody to fix their sidewalk or go out and fix it ourselves and then lien them. I don't, I don't agree with that.
Well, I don't think it's forcing, this is an incentive.
Use your mic, please.
No, it's an incentive if you are offering them to pay for half of the sidewalk. It's not an incentive if you say, if, if you send a letter and say, you fix this by next month or I'm going to fix it for you and now you have to pay for it. That is not an incentive.
Well, but it's not an incentive, but it is an incentive for us if I don't want to get sued on the thing, because we're liable for it.
I understand that, but I don't think everybody is worried about.
We're liable for it.
Well, Pat told us the letter, Olivia.
One at a time, please.
If we tell them, Patty, give the law again, I guess.
It, it doesn't really matter, well, if we send letters to everybody in town that has a defective sidewalk, it gives us a potential common law argument to get paid back if we get sued if somebody trips. That's what it does. But it doesn't guarantee anything, it just means that we would at least create an argument, that we warned you that this was dangerous and you didn't do anything. And then, so then you got a common law, because that case that Jason mentioned, the court specifically said that we don't, we're not going to reach the question of common law, that may well still exist. Right, they did not talk about that. They just said you can't have a statutory local automatic indemnity if that owner did not, you know, what never, you know, if you didn't send a letter, your, all your basis went away. So the reason I said we ought to be sending letters is because there's at least that possibility in court that we could say, well, we paid fifty thousand dollars on an injury and we want to go against that owner's insurance. And our exhibit A in that case is, look, we sent you guys a letter that Jason Kraft drafted that said, your sidewalk's out of whack, somebody's going to trip, you need to fix it. Right, so that gives us at least a common law argument. So just to be clear to everybody, it doesn't necessarily mean we're going to win, it just means that we've, in, in the common, common language of tort law, if you know or have reason to know of a danger and you don't correct it, right, you can be liable for the injury that results. So that's putting them on notice of their dangerous condition. So, you could send them a letter and never go and enforce it. And I don't know what that really, what happens then, you know.
We send a letter out and, you know, offer the fifty-fifty split. I didn't know rental properties are taxed differently in the city of Clinton, so that makes sense, they're not included on this. But in those that contact, get the stuff fixed up, those that can't afford it and brush it off, you move on to the next section and you hit them again next time around.
Yeah, basically what you do.
I mean, that to me is what you do. And that alleviates you on chasing people around, blah, 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 we send the letter. You'll probably get fifty percent response, right? I mean, you'll get response, you'll get sidewalks fixed. And those that can't afford it and are, are unwilling to do it, we'll hit them on the next round and maybe they'll have some money at that point. Or maybe they'll just get it done in their fashion.
Yeah.
Or maybe they'll take their sidewalk out and they don't want people walking in their front yard.
Yeah, well, we, administratively, it's not a problem, we'll do whatever we need to do.
I don't have a sidewalk and I don't want a sidewalk, to be real frank.
We'll start over on second.
We're putting the trail on his.
Yeah, I was going to say trails.
Properties with sidewalks and, and, you know. But I mean, I've replaced sidewalks before, but see, I just did it, you know? I didn't call Jason and, and nobody told me I had to do it, I just knew it didn't look good and I fixed it.
That's, that's a good, that's.
That's how you're supposed to.
Yeah.
But you gotta understand, Cody, that everybody.
That's the morally correct thing to do.
What's, what's the manpower is going to take to walk the eight quadrants?
Well, how big's the quadrant?
It's not going to be quite as much as you might think. I mean, we got some fast walkers.
And we, and we do have a lot, and we do have a lot of data though, so a couple, two years ago.
How fast can you walk through twenty miles?
Went and did almost every sidewalk.
My big thing is, your office is, is very busy with a lot of things. And putting this on top of it, how does that affect your ability to handle?
I'm very confident we'll be able to complete the work. We have, we have a new hire coming in. We, we're operating just with two.
Yeah.
It's just Zane and me, I know. It's, it's, it's just two of us and we're both engineers, both very busy, but we have another person coming in. Kyle Gassman will be here in May or June. And this will be, I, I think it'll take him, you know, part of every day for a month to complete one section of town. And it's not that complicated, it's not that involved.
Let me help you out, Jason.
Yes, sir.
I talked to my two sons that work for Backwoods Roofing, believe it or not, Scott, Derek doesn't, and Darren don't go to all the roofs. It's on the computer. Somebody wrote a whole thing on.
Oh, checking out the roof.
Check out the roofs, it's all on your computer, so, i.e., you could do the same thing with sidewalks.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's how they do it. I can't remember what Derek called it.
You can't measure the.
We can't do that though, we could automate it, we could do similar to we, how we do the streets. I'm sure we could pay a company.
To drive a scooter around the sidewalks and do the pavement conditioning.
Probably some robot.
Jason, Jason, we're not paying nobody, we're not paying nobody to drive around.
Well, if he's worried about administration.
I, I just, I don't know.
We gotta start, my guess.
We'll take care of it, it's not a problem.
I look at it this way, we have to start, we gotta start somewhere, because I remember, you guys probably don't remember, but I remember the X's.
Me too.
Oh god, yes, a couple of brothers, my, a couple of my brothers got it, I'm like, ah, you got Xed. Got to fix sidewalk.
What about, what about the sidewalks that we own that we have to fix?
You do?
So now we're going to pay for residential sidewalks and then we have.
Maybe some of our sidewalks, we should be on top of also, so.
Well, I'm just saying.
We are on top of those. But the, the goal would be eventually, this year it would be, our staff would do it. But eventually the goal is to have a summer intern like we've had in years past, and those are, that's a good job for them. I'm not worried about the administrative side of it.
Might not have the money for a summer, summer intern, just wants to go on forward, because we're going to be like Cody said, it's not going to be good next year, so. Don't, don't even look like that.
Solving problems, that's, that's not. I think a summer intern is like less than ten thousand dollars.
No, you, I mean, you're fine, Jason, there's nothing wrong with what you proposed, it's just, you know, what's, what's, yeah, what do you want to do sitting here, right?
What, what happens if the, the next council cuts it?
You know, nothing's going to be perfect. There's no way that we're going to come up with a perfect plan that everyone in town's going to be happy with.
No, I'm just, I'm wondering, we should probably quit requiring sidewalks because they're really an unfunded mandate.
Remove them all.
Yeah, just tear them up.
We also need to discuss with the tree commission. We also need to discuss with the tree commission to stop planting trees in the parkway and start talking to people and putting them in their yards.
Oh, the right of way, yeah.
Yeah.
They just did it.
Yeah, because a lot of those sidewalks that you'll see in the area.
Well, I think the two, the two things that, that have come up, that legitimate concerns come up tonight. One, what if you just don't want to fix your sidewalk? Or you don't have the money to do it, and you don't want to be involved in the fifty-fifty program? You know, how do we answer that? Because if, if a sidewalk is literally missing, you know, should, is that just, you know, until someone falls and injures themselves, that could just be there, you know, that, I think, I think there, there is like an obligation as part of this to take, to take the ordinance and take the policy seriously.
Nobody gets hurt falling under, right? So we're really creating a safety hazard.
That's not true.
That is funny though.
What about, we got some brick sidewalks around town, are those going to be, have to be removed? Because I think they're kind of cool.
Yeah. Well, if they're, if they don't qualify, I mean, yeah, they can relay the bricks.
Yeah. Are your standards in here more strict, less strict, the exact same as wherever you got these standards, or?
They're slightly less strict than what is currently in the ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, my, I'm, I'm just gonna, I don't care what everybody decides to do.
You can do chip seal?
Yeah, chip seal them. I mean, I'm fine with sending, I'm fine with sending letters out, I'm fine with the program itself. Will be funded next year, I have no clue. But those that follow up and do it, perfect, leave the people alone that don't, hit them on the next time around. I, you're still going to accomplish what you're going for without strong-arming people. Yep. And I, I really, I, I'm speaking for landlords, I don't know why you have determined that they, their properties are different. Because a lot of the landlords in a lot of these properties would have low-income people living in them.
Well, that's up to you, you can change that.
I think that was me.
Oh, okay.
Because I believe that a property that you are making money on is different than an owner-occupied, that, I believe that was me.
Oh, it was, I do remember that one.
Well, that's fine, but.
Make money, they can afford it.
A house is a house with a person living in it.
Yeah, definitely.
And I don't think it, it really is, this is about safety of public walking on a sidewalk, not to me about placing a roof or something on somebody's house, you know, so.
Alright. What are you looking for?
No, I mean, any adjustments to this, we can, we can bring it back in the form of a resolution and an ordinance. And if it's, you know, like I said.
I'll make a motion for that.
Is it mandatory, number one? Number two, is, is owner-occupied only or are income properties and commercial properties also a part of this? And number three, can you do it yourself if you want to? Those are the three things that were brought up.
Alright, what's your motion?
Oh, I move this forward.
As is?
As is.
Okay. Do you have a second?
No second here.
Second.
Okay, sounds like we have a motion and a second to move this forward as is, any discussion?
I'd like to see some modifications made. Patrick?
Cody, I, I just don't know how many modifications you can make. Well, we gotta start somewhere, we make it happen.
Yeah, we're gonna, we need to start in a position where it works out okay for everybody, accomplishes the same goal. So, that's not what we got here, so.
What, what's the?
We can either.
What's the requested modification?
I would, we can send the letters, we can have a fifty-fifty split, we can determine who it applies to, whether, you know, rental properties qualify. I'll let you guys decide that. And we send the letter, we strongly recommend they do XX and X and we move on. And then when we're back on year eight, we'll hit them again if they didn't do anything. Or we will, or we will smile and say, oh wow, they did it all and move on.
You could always revisit the question of compelling people in later years too.
Yeah, my compellingness is sending the letter.
He's only proposing what the program would be, he's not saying whether, he's asking whether you want to make it compulsory if they comply.
Yeah, I know, well, right now.
So Pat's proposal is only that, what Jason said.
Just to let's get something started.
Pat, this, this proposal requires it, right? So Jason would have to follow up and then we'd eventually lien a property if they didn't.
Doesn't say that.
They didn't.
I couldn't read that far.
That's part of the owner-occupied.
It says that in there.
System, yeah. If, if you opt to be a part of the program and then you don't pay, you know, what would you, what would then? It would seem like if you, if you sign an agreement.
Oh, oh, so what happens if I get a letter and I just don't respond, let's say? What happens then?
Didn't, if you don't respond?
Yep, I just ignore your letter.
I'll see you in eight years.
See, it says I have to have it completed within thirty days, so I.
Right.
I ignore the letter, I pretend I never got it, what happens?
I, I think you want it to be nothing, maybe? Is that the answer you're looking for?
No, I want, I want them to fix it.
You move on to eight years.
Let's say they don't, yeah. So then we hit them on the next inspection cycle, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
Right.
Basically, that's what they're doing.
No, that's not what it says, it says we'll take action if they don't do anything.
Emergency repairs will be waiting thirty days.
No, that's not what it says.
Well, that's what this. Well, we don't want to put that in there. We want to fix it.
There's nothing in this policy right now that says what will happen if you just ignore the letter.
Yes, there is.
Well, I, I think first of all, thirty days is kind of quick because you probably can't even get a concrete guy out in thirty days if you have to hire it down. in thirty days if you have to hire it down. So that should probably be at least sixty days.
I think I was given a hundred and eighty or something like that in Cedar Rapids, just to, and they're pretty.
You were?
They were pretty forceful about it in Cedar Rapids. They were gonna say, they told me they're gonna come, do it. If you, if I, you don't do it. I think I got more than sixty days even.
So I guess I'm, maybe.
If we notify it in December, you're not gonna get it done until May anyway.
That's probably what they did, is sent the notice in early spring and they gave me till the end of the summer or something. I think it was longer than.
I like a hundred and eighty days. That's re, that's reasonable.
I think what happens is you're just, you're held, if you're not gonna be a part of the program, then you just, I guess you're just liable.
So, so basically what you're.
So it's still setting a date certain.
So we're sending a letter. If you want to be part of this program, you can apply. If you don't, we're just gonna keep sending you a letter.
If you don't, we, we're warning you that you may be liable for injury or damages if, you know, for not. And the city reserves a right at a later time to enforce its code and cause you to repair your sidewalk. And then this council can decide in future years if it wants to allocate money to actually go after some of the egregious people that, you know, are ignoring us. That's a policy decision for later. You could do it that way.
But at the same time, you've got your basis.
In other words, it's vo, yeah, it's voluntary. We'll send out letters to anybody with a defective sidewalk. It's voluntary whether to comply. But if you get in the program and you don't pay after you've signed the letter, then we're gonna come fix it and charge you because you've agreed.
So I, I think.
And then you make the decision later about whether to.
I think we'll need to have a draft letter.
Yeah.
To look at as part of, of this. But see, like, I don't understand this here. The city will determine a repair schedule based on the sidewalk's condition. Emergency repairs will be completed within thirty days. While si, sidewalks with minor defects will be scheduled for repair within the timeframe necessary to ensure completion by November fifteenth. Is this if you opt into the program?
That's the.
For the repair process.
Because that's before it goes into the city assistance, blah, blah, blah.
I mean, if they're not opting into the program, I, I, I really don't know what we can do. I mean, it, it seems like we can.
Yeah.
I don't know. Yeah, I like rein inspect. I continually rein inspect. I, I don't.
Well, you said it's gonna take eight years to do the whole city, right?
If you're not gonna be part of the program, then this policy is not for you.
Yeah, and then, so basically you're gonna do the whole city over an eight-year period and then we're gonna start over, right? Yeah. I guess. And then probably some of the sidewalks we fixed will need fixed again.
I mean, it'll last longer than a year if I were to.
It depends on the ATVs are driving on them.
Yeah, exactly.
The intent of this policy is for the city to be a partner with its residents in maintenance of sidewalks.
Okay.
It's not for someone to receive a letter from the city that says, you better do this or you're gonna be in trouble.
So is this what we're gonna actually adopt, what's written in this? Are we gonna write up a resol?
We're gonna write up a resolution and an ordinance.
Okay.
That explains this. This is a policy that'll just be on file.
Okay.
I, I, but I do think that there's still a questions to answer. Can you do it yourself if you want to? And does it need to be owner occupied or can it be anybody?
Yep.
I think we've already established that the city's not gonna come after you if you just ignore the letter. You're just liable at that point, in the city's eyes.
Well, it depends on an emergency situation probably. But what constitutes an emergency?
I think it's just hopefully they, hopefully they include themselves in the program. Hopefully they, they want to participate.
Well, if the city's gonna pay fifty percent, I mean, that's, that's a pretty good deal. But in the beginning, are you gonna have so many that you're gonna run out of money? Then what you do?
Well, see.
Well, yeah, we can only budget so much.
See, it is first come. Councilmember Davis, you had something? Oh, okay. All right. All right. Trying to make sure you get your chance. All right. Um, I, so we have a motion and a second for this as is. I, I would like to entertain a motion to amend it to a hundred and eighty days.
For what?
Set it at thirty days.
Can we get rid of the date of November fifteenth and put a hundred and eighty days there?
Yeah. Don't, don't, you, you, a hundred and eighty days from the date of the letter, basically.
If you guys remember, you're gonna get, if we do it in three long readings, you're gonna get a lot of time to make changes. So maybe what we need to do is get a draft ordinance going so you guys can take a look at it and then we can understand that we're gonna have changes as we go.
And let's make sure it's clear on how, yeah.
So. Does anybody else have an issue with owner occupied? If they do, I can give on that.
I think you just keep it on the table for now and then we go, we hit that spot, you guys can clear that up and go with what you, what the majority wants and then go to the next one.
The only, the only thing about the, we have three readings, sometimes it concerns me a little bit that we change the ordinance at reading one and then reading two. And then you're really not getting three readings for the, for the citizens.
Want to bring a draft back for the cow?
Yeah, let's do that.
And we'll do it.
A draft ordinance for the cow.
Bring a draft ordinance back to the cow.
And a letter, please.
And the letter?
I got the letter.
And then you can, and then we can make changes there so that you're getting three full readings of what the council's purview is.
That's good. That's great.
Are we keeping this as owner occupied or is it opening up to every property?
I'm gonna get.
Property owner, yeah.
Everybody? Every single property?
I think, well, let's bring that conversation back at the next cow, right? We'll do the ordinance, we'll do the letter and then you guys can mull it over and then we can talk about it.
I think we remove the date and put a hundred and eighty days.
I agree.
I, I think it's, I mean, you, November fifteenth, November fifteenth, you get a letter, you got fifteen days to fix it.
I agree. I like that. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Councilmember Shemmers, go ahead and.
I was just gonna say, if you get a, if you get a notice on November fifteenth, you got fifteen days to.
You're not gonna get it done.
Yes, I agree.
Eighty days or the summer season, you know, like the construction season? Cause if you get it in November, you're still gonna.
Right.
If you, if you time the, when we go out and inspect, if you time the letter right, we can send them out at the right time to where it's going to. You don't have to send it the day you notice necessarily, I guess.
Who cares how many days?
I think the one thing you guys need to think about too is.
Except for being liable for.
But if we come across one that is so egregious, like I've never seen.
Then I think we just do it.
Well, that's, I think we guys need to make sure that that's included because there, there are some, like we did on Second Street. It was after the ratio, it was actually Brian's gang. They actually went over and had a couple where the trees had uprooted and the sidewalks were sitting there like this.
We have a lot like that.
We, yeah, but that's where we kind of maybe, maybe we should attack those, you know.
Well, we need to be careful what we're pushing on our citizens because we're not taking care of our tree problem already.
Yeah, true.
Well, yeah.
Did someone else have something over here? Has Councilmember Shemmers finished? So, okay. All right.
It does say in there, if the damage sidewalk caused by city-owned items such as a sewer mantle or a tree, the city's responsible for the sidewalk maintenance. But I don't really think we need to change anything in here then, except for whether or not it needs to be owner occupied. Change the November eight fifteenth to a hundred and eighty days and then we determine whether or not some guy can do it himself, you know, property owner.
They can because you're gonna inspect it.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right.
So you do want that in there. You can do it yourself. Do we want it to be owner occupied only or is it any property owner? Do they need to vote on it?
Or is it just residential property owners?
Yeah, that's tough because I mean, there's some sidewalks by businesses that are more heavily traveled than a residential sidewalk and they need work.
Mm-hmm. Could just leave it as the abutting owner, like it says in the code.
Yep.
True.
Make it general, any owner, any property owner.
Sidewalk is equally dangerous regardless of where it is.
You want to strike the owner occupied thing as well? Just anybody can be included in the policy? So.
So it's the, yeah, budding property owner? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion?
And there is no ramification. I should have started with that.
Do I need an updated motion, Pat?
To bring it back. I think it, you should make a motion to amend to include the hundred and eighty days.
I'll make a motion to amend.
I don't know what the hundred and eighty days is for. I'm confused.
From receiving a letter.
From receiving, to complete the.
Instead of using November fifteenth.
How about we do this? How about we do this?
I thought we weren't mandating it.
Hold on. We have a motion and a second for this as is. We've determined that it's gonna come back to a committee of the whole in ordinance form. Let's just let it lie as it is.
I'll move my second.
Bring it, bring it back. You don't want to remove, you want to remove it?
Yeah, so if we're.
What do we even need a motion for, right?
We, we don't really need a motion then, yes.
I just send out my motion.
All right.
But again, I do need some clarity here. What is the hundred and eighty days for? If we're, if.
Whether you're using November fifteenth, we're gonna say a hundred and eighty days.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay. All right. Okay. So it's just setting a timeline. So you have time with the ground.
You get your letter, you have a hundred and eighty days to finish this.
And we want the ground to be unfrozen.
If you're getting money.
Yes.
If you're getting money. Now, what if three hundred and sixty-five days afterwards and we still have funding, somebody calls? Are we really gonna care? They're getting their sidewalk fixed.